Good evening, everyone. I would ask that you'd please rise as we welcome Lee Cantonan from Grayson High Methodist Church to lead us in our vacation, followed by the Pledge of Leitings. Good evening, Lee.
Well, thank you all. Let's pray. You know, Lord, we thank you for just a beautiful evening. We thank you, Lord, for the opportunity to serve and give the wisdom that you give to each of us. We pray a very special blessing upon each of the men and women who represent us on the city council here tonight for the giving of themselves their time and energy. And I just pray that they would feel the support of the community for the great work that they do. So, lead us and guide us as we go forward in this business. We pray, Lord God, that the things that we do, the decisions that we make, will truly build up our community and turn our hearts and minds always toward you. In the name of the one who gave his life for us, we pray. Amen.
Amen.
The United States of America, and to the call of the great which stands, one nation under them, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone. It's May 17th, 2021, and I'll call this meeting of the Fergus Falls City Council to order. Roll call, please.
Here.
Here.
Yeah.
Here.
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 We have a quorum. Our first item of business on the agenda is the approval of the agenda, and I'll call on our city administrator, Andrew Bremseth. Good evening, Andrew.
Good evening, Your Honor, council members. It's really good to see all your faces again. It's starting to feel like normal.
Maybe.
You too. Good to see you.
Oh, you guys missed mine, so. Yeah, there's really no changes to the agenda this evening. You guys have the most recent copy. There are three items that were sent out earlier. Those items could all be taken care of on consent if the council is okay with that. Otherwise, if they're removed, they'll just add them to the end of the agenda when we're talking through the ordinances and resolutions, Your Honor.
Thank you. Andrew, with that, I would entertain a motion to approve the amended agenda.
Make that motion, Your Honor.
Thank you, Tom.
I'll second.
Thanks, Krista. Anyone have any comments? Is everyone okay with the consent? Scott, did you want to move one of them to the...
Number two, I'd like to visit the question on number two.
Okay. And we'll... That's the licenses or the second... You mean the...
No, of the additions regarding the Hayland lease agreement with...
Hayland, got it. Okay. We'll move the Hayland discussion to the end of the agenda. Anyone else?
Under old business, can we visit the emergency order that's in place, you know, that this state has? Because I think we're still operating under that, aren't we? Yeah.
Sure. Yeah, we do. Old business. With that, Tom, you okay with amending the motion to...
Yes, I would amend the motion accordingly.
Krista? Okay, so we got an amended agenda. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. That motion carries. There are no public hearings this evening. Under... Okay, I'm sorry. I'm looking at the amended agenda. So, all those are going on to the consent other than the second one. So, we're going to move on to the public hearings. There are no... A warrant of bids. There are no bids to award under petitions and communications. We have a proclamation for Public Works Week, and I will read briefly from this proclamation that Lynn has put together for us. "Stronger Together" is the theme, May 16th to May 22nd, 2021. Whereas public works professionals focus on infrastructure facilities and services that are of vital importance and sustainable and resilient communities and to the public health, high quality of life and well-being of the people of Fergus Falls, whereas these infrastructure facilities and services could not be provided without the dedicated efforts of public works professionals who are engineers, managers, and employees at all levels of government and the private sector who are responsible for rebuilding, improving, and protecting our nation's transportation, water supply, water treatment, and solid waste systems. Public buildings and other structures and facilities essential for our citizens. Whereas it is in the public interest for citizens, civic leaders, and children in Fergus Falls to gain knowledge of and to maintain an ongoing interest in and understanding of the importance of public works and the public works programs in their respective communities. And whereas the year 2021 marks the 61st annual National Public Works Week sponsored by the American Public Works Association. Now be it resolved that I, Benjamin Shire, the mayor of Fergus Falls, to hereby designate the week of May 16th through the 22nd, 2021, as Public Works Week in the city of Fergus Falls, and I urge all citizens to join with myself, the city council, to pay tribute to our public works professionals, managers, and employees, and to recognize the substantial contributions they make in protecting our national health, safety, and quality of life. Signed this day, May 17th, 2021. Thank you to all the public works professionals. Guy, thank you. To all the city employees, but particularly Brian. I don't see Brian this evening, but Guy and all the staff that work on you, thanks for all you do to keep the city running behind the scenes. Under the consent agenda, we have, what would it be? Eight, I guess, items, counting the two additions that we're going to add to the consent agenda. And if anyone has any of those eight they'd like to remove, we can do that. If not, I'd entertain a resolution for the consent agenda. Thank you, Brent.
I'll second.
Thank you, Caroline. Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 That resolution is approved. Tonight, under ordinance and resolutions, we have three for our consideration, the first being a second reading of ordinance, seven, eighth series, amending City Code Chapter 31.08 relating to the interim emergency succession. This has been before us, had its first reading. If anyone has any questions, we'll direct them to either our city administrator or our city attorney. Seeing none, roll call, please.
Yes.
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 That ordinance is approved. Second item is a resolution approving a land sale and entering into a purchase agreement with Lonnie and Danielle Ballweg for a parcel of land on Southview Drive, and we'll call on our city administrator, Andrew Bremseth.
Thank you, Your Honor, council members. We introduced this topic at the council meeting beginning of May, and if the council wishes to proceed with this transaction, they simply need to pass a resolution this evening, giving us the ability to enter into the purchase agreement that was included in your packet. I have heard from a few neighbors. I know there's one in the audience here this evening that may wish to speak, and you all have a letter from another neighbor that lives directly to the south of the Ballwigs on your desk this evening, and she was in to talk to me this afternoon, wanting the council to slow this down a little bit and had some concerns with how this is playing out.
Just for the public, do you want to summarize? We all have a copy of the letter, but your conversation with her, and summarize the letter for the public.
Yeah, you know, generally, she mentions that they weren't aware of this transaction prior to now, and then I explained that her timing with raising this, I wouldn't call it an objection, but these questions is appropriate because that's exactly why we have the process that we have, so the public has the opportunity to engage in this process. And really, you know, they have some concerns about the way they use their land today and how that may be impacted in the future if this were to proceed. And they also talked a little bit about wanting to be part of a dialogue as to whether or not if this property is available, could they potentially be able to purchase a portion of it, or why weren't they made, given the same opportunity as the Ballwigs who, you know, have brought this forward to this point. So, very respectful conversation, I thought, really genuinely wanted to have further dialogue on this and make sure that this works for the entire neighborhood. So, I guess that's high level my takeaway from that conversation.
Thanks, Andrew. And if it's okay with the council, at some point, we'll entertain a resolution or some sort of motion going forward. But I know Mike Robertson is also in the audience, and I believe, Mike, would you like to speak to the council?
So, anyway, my name is Mike Robertson. I live at 2312 Lakeview Drive, which is right across from the gale that wrote the letter and talked with Andrew. And I talked to Andrew today, and I talked to several of your council members today. I guess it just kind of blindsided us. We didn't know that that was going to happen. I see their yard just getting dissected. It's been... Climate Belts owned it before that, James, and they always use that yard, and so it's always been yard, and now all of a sudden, it's going to be... Their yard is just cut on the east side where it's like 15 feet away from their deck, maybe, just a skinny little parcel instead of going where they mowed 30 yards, 90, 100, 120 feet. So, anyway, I say all that because I was worried about the possibility, are you going to be putting up a commercial building? Now, I was told that it's not a commercial building, it's just a storage building, but we don't really know what it's going to look like and stuff, and there's some of us that in the neighborhood that are probably concerned about property values when you put up a big building like that, you know? It looks like a commercial building, you know? That's one thing. But I feel bad for my neighbors, too, that they didn't have an opportunity to buy that yard. They're lovely family, three kids, you know, and some stepkids and playing in the yard right across the street from me, you know? And we talk to them all the time and talk with the kids, and I just feel like it's unfortunate that they might go off of our street, Lakeview, off the cul-de-sac, and make a driveway going off the cul-de-sac across their yard, their old yard, or whatever you want to call it, to that property. My other thought on it is, why is he not using his own driveway and going around on his own property if he wants to have that building? Why does he have to come in from Lakeview? It was my understanding, talking to Andrew, that at one point, that little building, I don't even know what it is, a little pump station or something, that's to the east and right off of Otter Tail 1, they may be entertained trying to share that driveway with the city, and because of liability and everything else in the water that's buried there, they didn't want to do that. The city didn't want to entertain that, which is fine. Why isn't he using his own property from, I forget the name of the street there, South...
Southview Drive.
Whatever, you know, off of Otter Tail 1 that goes to his house? Why is he not using that property to go to this building that he wants to build in his backyard, you know? So, with that said, I would just like you to respectfully consider putting the brakes on this and letting us talk to some more neighbors and getting more information. What's the building going to look like? Where is it going to go? And not be in a rush to accept this purchase agreement tonight, but give us a couple of weeks or maybe a month, you know? So, anyway, that's it. That's all I have.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mike, for being here and expressing your opinions. What wishes of the council, Tom?
Well, that is my word, you know? So, I've heard from some constituents that, you know, want to, have asked us to step back and take a look at it. So, I would move that we table this particular item until we can have some more discussion around it and get more input from the neighborhood and just get some of these questions answered. You know, I know that some people have expressed a possible interest in purchasing the land, which, you know, I don't know how that process looks, but I do think that we need some more time to look at it.
Okay, so there's a motion to delay this or table this vote for...
I would second that.
Second by Jim. Any...
I'd just a comment. I mean, I think, you know, that I have no problem with what council member Rufus suggested, but I also kind of think that somehow or other, you know, we had the same situation when we sold, you know, the Shopko car park, you know, that, you know, somebody kind of came and said, oh, if I'd known it was for sale, you know, then I would have looked at it. But we kind of, we didn't give them an opportunity to kind of come to the council and put a price in because, you know, we're not into a bartering. And I think, you know, we have to be careful about what precedents we set in the sense that, you know, somebody approached the city, you know, we obviously came to terms with them, and then we go through a process, and now are we going to get into a bidding war? You know, I mean, you know, he's agreed to buy a piece of land, we agreed to sell it, and now all of a sudden, we're going to open that up from a contractual point of view. And I'd like to hear kind of Rolf's position on where does that leave us? You know, he offered to buy it, we offered to sell it, now we're going to delay it, and what are we going to do? What are we going to do with the delay? You know? Because we still have a contract, and he has a contract.
Yeah, I don't believe we don't have a contract.
You don't have a contract, and that was the purpose of tonight's hearing, is to give you an opportunity to review it and authorize entering into a contract. You haven't done that, so you don't have an offer, you don't have a purchase, you don't have any agreement.
We have an offer.
You have an offer, so you can basically say, well, we'll accept it, or we're not prepared to accept it, or we don't accept it. So, you know, there's nothing that says you have to sell city property, but there's nothing that says you have to hang on to it either. So, I get the fact that with Shopko, that was a situation where it was part of a larger piece of the puzzle that was being presented to the council at that time, and the Shopko development included two major parcels in town. So, I think there's a difference is that those parcels were to be used in conjunction with each other on a larger project. This is simply just combining a parcel with another parcel simply to allow a person to go ahead and shed or something like that. And so, I mean, ultimately, it's up to the council to decide how the issues should proceed. You got a motion to table, you got a second. That's the action before you right now. And if you wish to have more time, I would suggest you both are affirmative for the motion.
Any other comments?
I just want to add something just for the public. Anthony clearly said this, but, and I support, you know, some of the concerns. I mean, just so it's clear, this property owner, you know, this was never for sale publicly. It was a property owner who came to the city wanting to do this and acquire this. And so, you know, we went through the process we've always done, and this is the time where people could come forth with concerns. I hear the concerns, and I'm okay going through the process to hear them out. My concern would be, you know, obviously, we went through a process to get to this point with delayed build, and I think it's been pretty clear that, you know, costs have gone up. So, I would like to see us, if we do table this, to maybe put a deadline on it, so, you know, if it's in two weeks, I don't know what that is realistic or not, but, you know, if it would go through, I'd like to see us move fast on the issue.
Thanks, Justin. I think that's reasonable. Yeah, Tom?
Yeah, and I appreciate the other council members' input, and they make good points. I think in the interest of being as open and transparent as possible, I think we do, you know, if we get requests from the neighborhood to slow something down and allow for some questions to be asked and answered, I think that's reasonable. But I don't want to set the precedent of every time something like this comes up, somebody can delay it as long as they want to, you know? So, I think, you know, what I would like to do is try to schedule like a Zoom meeting with the neighbors, send out an invitation, try to get that scheduled as soon as possible to give people a chance to ask and answer these questions, and then, and then, I don't know if we'll be able to get that done before the next council meeting. I would like to.
I think we need to make that happen. Just move forward one way or the other, so we don't just delay this forever. I think that's...
If you want to add that to your motion, I'll second that.
Yeah, I would... I don't necessarily want to make a commitment that we're going to address it at the next council meeting, but, I mean, we'll do everything we can because I want Mr. Ballweg to have as much time as possible to get to work on his project. I know we've been... But, I mean, part of the discussions that we'd had in the past is needing to, you know, needing to get this out there so that it's public record, so that people know what's going on, so it doesn't look like we're trying to sneak something in. You know, I don't want that. I want to be open and transparent. So, and one point of clarification, too, regarding to Mr. Robertson's comments about the yard of the folks that live at, across from Mr. Robertson, they have, they do mow a section of city property, so the part that is adjacent to their yard that they use for various activities is actually city property. It's not that we're going to go and cut their yard and take part of their yard away. So, but I do think that we need to give the neighbors a chance to at least be heard and get questions answered. So, I'll stop talking.
Thanks, Tom. Thanks. So, there's a motion on the table. Any last thoughts? Motion is to table the resolution until further consideration and discussion with the neighbors. All in favor of that motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign.
Aye.
The motion carries. Item number three is a motion directing the city attorney to draft a management and FBO contract for the airport manager, and I will call on Justin Arneson, who led the, who was one of the... Justin and Krista were the two council liaisons to the group that we appointed to look into this issue. So, Justin, take it away.
Thanks, Mayor. So, as you all are aware, we had a subcommittee that was comprised of two city council members, staff, which was Mike Hartwell, Brian Yvaro, and Rolf Nicomel from the attorney side, and then we had two airport advisory members, Andrew Yegi and Robert Olson. And we met consecutively for four consecutive meetings. The first meeting was consistent of a process Mike walked us through as far as looking at qualifications of what we learned in the first go-around and some of the things that we thought were must-haves. The second meeting, then, we had a conference call with the previous consultant to kind of go through the process that they went through to vet out the original RFP process. And then the third meeting was to kind of pull all that back in as a subcommittee, and we wanted to have closed interviews with the top two candidates that we wanted to invite back for the opportunity. It was constructed of basically a PowerPoint presentation where they were to give us their best and final and sell us on their vision for the airport. So, I'm before you today to... And then we met the last time after that. We had, it was last Tuesday we met, where then after the interviews took place with both parties, we met as a subcommittee to reconvene to move a candidate forward. So, before this evening, we'd like to move forward that we... I'll make a motion for Rolf to draft a contract with Sky Crew Services. We'd like that to come back before our subcommittee to review and then have the final before the next council meeting for your approval.
Thank you, Justin. So, first of all, there's a motion, somebody like to second that motion?
I'll second.
Thanks, Krista. So, the motion is to have the city attorney draft a contract with Sky...
Sky Crew Services.
Sky Crew Services, and then to bring that back to your subcommittee and then back to the city, assuming approval with, or any changes with the subcommittee, back to the city council for final approval.
Correct.
Thank you. There's a motion. Questions?
Yes.
Comments? Yeah, Brent, go ahead.
Well, I'll be voting no against this because pretty much nothing's changed. I don't care what came up. They have no experience. They do not have the formal training. They do not have the experience dealing with the FAA and MEND. I've watched the interviews twice, and they, we went through this process in the first place in order to avoid what happened here. And no matter what, I did not know either one of these individuals before I started getting phone calls and started getting letters and started doing my own checking. And to this day, I have not, except for three letters and a petition that were all started by friends of Mr. Sander, I have not received one bit of positive information on these two individuals. They can tell you all the things in the world that they got planned for the airport. That doesn't mean they can carry them out. Now, Mr. Stacks approached the FBO at the airport and basically told him that the Alexandria City Council would not allow Alex Aviation to manage this airport. That came in a letter to me. I went down and talked to the FBO, and he admitted, yes, he had. So, I contacted every member of the council in Alexandria, the mayor, the city administrator, and except for two councilmen who did not return my calls, everyone confirmed that the rumor was false. These are the kind of things that we're going to have to deal with. And with that in mind, I'm just not willing to hand over an airport because it's, I just do not feel right with this, and I've received a lot of letters in total opposition. And the only ones that I've gotten in favor are people that I can trace back to Sander Habrocken. So, I mean, we have employees starting petitions, we have friends that are writing letters, nobody else. So, with everything in mind, I just cannot bring myself to move them forward. We had a candidate who met all the requirements, who had all the experience, who had a proven track record, and I'll be voting no against this tonight. I will not be moving it forward.
Thanks, Brent. Just a point of clarification for the committee, because I did receive a telephone call from the mayor of Alexandria. Any communication between the city council of Alexandria and your committee did not influence any decisions on this process, correct?
We were not, as far as I'm aware, in any communication with the council from Alexandria.
I just wanted to make sure, and I just, because I hadn't heard that, so I just...
Well, my biggest thing is starting a rumor a couple of days before an interview process doesn't sound real good to me.
No, I appreciate your concern, Brent. I just wanted to make sure that that hadn't entered into the...
That never came up in any of our meetings. Unfortunately, that's the first I'm hearing of that. So, it did not come in the subcommittee's decision-making process that day, no.
Sure. I just wanted to clarify because I did get a call from, like I said, from the mayor of Alexandria. Other questions? Comments? We have a motion on the...
I guess I have one question.
Caroline, yes.
What is the, do we know what the length of the contract will be? I know we kind of discussed that in the past, or...
Subcommittee, once we have a chance to go through the contract itself, we determine the timeline.
Okay.
We'll make that recommendation back to the council.
Okay.
So, just to clarify, we're not, I mean, we're not picking anyone tonight. We're asking Rolf to draw up a contract for further review by the subcommittee.
But we are moving towards, you know, a contract with Sky Crew Aviation. Let's just, let's be very clear about that, right? I mean, that's the recommendation of the subcommittee, and we're moving in that direction. We're asking our city attorney to draft a contract that we can, that can be reviewed by the subcommittee and the council.
Okay.
So, that's the motion. Last comments? Scott?
As the various options were being considered on this, I think the only point that I'd want to make is there's been a lot of emphasis placed on whether this is a local thing or not. The local word ends up being attached to a lot of the discussion. And in my view, the airport is more than just a local thing. We've got a lot of businesses, for example, in town that sell their products all over the world. They're not local companies. They've got great presence here, and they're regional or national or even bigger. In the same way, I think our airport is more of a regional asset of the city and not so much of a local one. It's not just some little restaurant. It's something that serves a much broader area. And with that in mind, I think that was reflected in the consultant's original opinions and recommendations, and I think that we need to keep that in mind.
Thank you, Scott. Other last comments before we vote on the motion? All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign.
Aye.
Aye.
That motion carries. Tonight, under presentation of claims, we have claims in the... Six to two, it's... Yeah, it was Scott Kwame and Brent, I believe.
I was also a no.
So, it's five to three, my mistake. Jim voted no as well. Five to three, okay. Thank you. Under presentation of claims, we have claims in the amount of $3,509,244.52. If anyone has any questions, we will direct them to our city finance director.
I had one.
We're going to make a, Jim's anxious. Resolution here. Go ahead, Jim.
I offer a resolution to pay the bills.
All right, thank you. I bet you there's a second one next to you.
I'll second.
There you go. Okay, go ahead, Scott.
There was one item for over $37,000 on the equipment expenses that I asked Guy about, and I wonder if maybe he could tell us what that is for. The description was for a $37,000 payment to flexible pipe tool company for a rack-mount system. And rack-mount system could mean lots of different things. I was wondering if you could tell us what that's about.
Yes, thank you, Councilman Kwame. In this case, a rack-mount system is a camera used in our mainline sewers. It's a fancy word for a sewer camera, so it's not a glorious thing. It's a very necessary tool, though, in planning for different projects and looking for issues in our sewer mains. Yes, we are in the production of dirty movies.
He'll be here all night.
Oh, boy.
All right. Not sure how to follow that one up, but with that... Not sure how to follow that one up, but um, with that.
Good way to use that one.
Any other questions? Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 That resolution is approved. Uh, there are no board committee or department reports under, reports from staff and administrative officers. Uh, we'll be looking for a motion directing staff to begin the process of looking at franchise fees as a funding source for street improvements. Andrew Brumseth.
Yeah, thank you, our members. Um, and then after this item, if we could go back to that hayland.
Yeah, we have two. We have, and then we have the old business item as well.
Okay. Um, as you all may recall, last Wednesday, we had a great presentation um, that Clara Lynn and Brian put together and and delivered or performed, I guess, whatever the term you want to use. But uh, very entertaining and insightful. And at the tail end of that, we talked about the deliverable and the action item to that is looking at franchise fees. So um, before the council tonight, hoping that we can get your blessing and approval to begin conversations with Otter Tail Power and Great Plains Natural Gas about franchise fees. What should be a dedicated funding source to street improvements in Fergus Falls and continue to provide additional resources beyond what our levy dollars can do. To get ahead of the ever challenging street issue that Fergus Falls and every other community in Minnesota faces. The franchise fee is not an uncommon tactic. There's several hundred communities in the state that already deploy franchise fees. And those monies are um, set aside directly for street improvement. So to remain competitive, to get ahead, and quite frankly, to have a ongoing funding source, I think this is the right direction for the city to move. And as staff, we would like to begin those conversations, lay out what that process may look like. Come back to the council with what we see could be the benefit of franchise fees, what the amounts may look like and what those amounts could do for the city to improve that. PCI or pavement condition index, whatever the acronym is. And uh, get, you know, better streets. I mean, it's the number one thing we all hear about, you as council members and myself and staff. And um, I think this is a way to put our money where our mouths are and um, we want to continue or begin to explore those discussions. Again, I'll reiterate, this all will come back to the city council, be very transparent about what that may look like, what the process could be. And um, you know, how that would impact every household in Fergus Falls and where the monies would be spent. So just looking for that direction this evening and um, you know, I don't have much more information than that to share. Other than I did briefly give Otter Tail Power and Great Plains a heads up that this discussion will be happening tonight. And I would say it was well received and we have good and willing partners waiting for conversations to be had.
Sure. Thanks, Andrew. So just to be clear, no, we're not implementing franchise fees tonight. We're looking along staff to just explore that, what it might look like, bring back for discussion to the council. Someone like to offer that motion? Thank you, Tom.
I'll.
I'll second.
Thanks. Thanks, Caroline. Scott, go ahead.
Andrew, I meant to, I was hoping to visit with you a little bit about this beforehand, but I don't think it's a problem. I think it's not uncommon for franchise fees to also apply to other utilities like cable TV, telephone, uh, things like that. And it's probably the owners of the poles, if the wires are overhead, that then charge for the usage there. And perhaps the city doesn't have any city-owned utility poles. But uh, given that so much of that even goes underground, um, besides water and gas, uh, perhaps the conversation ought to also include uh, the cable and TV and telephone companies.
Yeah, um, that would be an option if we didn't already have those funds dedicated towards peg access. So those communities that don't have that um, would probably include cable television. We've already in the agreement with uh, peg or um, excuse me, with Spectrum and with Art Region. Have dedicated those franchise fees to a different use, which is peg access. Now, you could go above and beyond, but all of a sudden, you're gonna um, give them a competitive disadvantage as this kind of pendulum swings with streaming services and cable TV. And so I'm not sure if that's a good fit for our community. We'll certainly look at that. Um, but I think communities that don't have those fees dedicated to the peg access channel or other, other things would probably include that. And and maybe I just want to be clear, Scott knows exactly where, what this means, but I think for the average person, what a franchise agreement is, is for. Scott mentioned cable and and internet and those types of things and utilities to operate within the city-owned right of ways. And it would be charging a fee to these companies to, agreed upon fee to operate within the city right of ways. And then these companies, Otter Tail Power, Great Plains, would pass that fee on to customers. And I don't want to start talking specifics, but some communities have a $3 a month on every electric bill in the community. And that, you know, the the money gets pulled in to build a fund that then is used for streets. We don't know what that number will be in Fergus Falls. It's one of those things where you have to back into that number. We have to identify what our needs are, what level we want to reach, how many households and all those things. But that's really what the mechanism is, is it's an agreement with the utility companies to operate within the right of way. We charge them for the ability to do that and they pass that on to to customers. So I'm glad I could answer that question and maybe provide a little additional insight as to what a franchise fee actually means. The other thing about cable TV is not everybody has that or has the ability to have that. The, everybody's got a power or an electric account and everybody, not everybody has a gas account, but um, quite a few do. So it doesn't necessarily, and both of the companies have monopolies in town that we're working with, so it doesn't provide competitive advantages or disadvantages. And that's what I would hesitate to do with uh, with the cables, but good question.
Yeah, Jim.
I might mention that not everybody in Fergus Falls has Otter Tail Power either. There is some areas that have Lake Region.
Yeah, and that's, that's a great point. That's another conversation we'll have to have. You know, because the the intent would be for companies operating within the city limits of Fergus Falls to have that fee in place and pass that on to their customers. So um, it very well may include Lake Region Electric as well.
So, yeah. So did, I mean, ultimately, it's still a tax, you know, so does this make the utility, you know, how does the utility companies feel about it? Because.
They just pass it on, so it doesn't necessarily impact their bottom line. I mean, it probably generates more phone calls. What's this new fee? What's this dollar amount? Why is my bill going up? But they, they literally just will, it'll be an in and an out for them. It'll be on every electric bill in town if we were to move.
So we just pass in the book to make them the bad guys?
It's another, um, it's another funding mechanism that cities have at their disposal that um, is maybe more equitable in the sense that. Nonprofits, tax-exempt entities, renters, everybody would would be helping to pay their share rather than um, just. Properties that are taxable, which would be, you know, a property tax or a tax levy. So that that would be an argument is it's more equitable. Um, we have a lot of churches in town. They would get the same $5, $3, $2, whatever that fee is a month. And you know, contribute to the, to the roads in town and it would benefit everybody. But we'll bring back the pros and cons. I mean, I I'm not necessarily saying this is the right way to go. I think it's the right discussion to have. And we'll lay out um, pros and cons and other options if they do exist.
Thanks, Andrew. Any other questions? All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
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 Pose same sign. Motion carries. Uh, two items remaining. First is a resolution to award a 2021 through 2023 hayland lease agreement to Daryl Tisdale. Scott, did you have a question on that one?
Yeah, I think it's simple. I don't have a problem with the hayland lease as far as that goes. And I don't know if it's possible for Claire to put the map up on the screen that was provided to us. But it's got a slot in it, so to speak. There's this, the landing question is basically to the west and northwest of the Hoot Lake Power Plant, south of Somerset Road. And there's a large area and a smaller area and then this gap in between. And I'm just wondering what's with the gap in between? Why isn't it all included in this agreement or what is it that we uh, reserve that area for?
I've got the map here. I don't know if you can see it very well, but the gap referred to in Mr. Kwame's comment there is right in the middle between the two parcels. And excuse me, that is Otter Tail Power owned land.
Power lines going through there or is it?
There is a large uh, power line going through there, a main feeder line.
Okay.
They have leased it out to this.
Trail goes through there and so it seemed like it was maybe following some of that, but then again, it isn't. So I don't know, I wasn't sure how to read that.
They have leased it out to the same individual, Mr. Tisdale, in the past, so it may be that he is the lease here again. But it's just not part of our land, so we don't manage the lease.
So he may have a separate deal with them and still handle it all in one.
Right.
Mowing or whatever, but it's just what we own or what Otter Tail owns. Okay, clear enough. And with that, I'd make a.
Resolution?
Resolution to uh, go forward.
Thank you, Scott. Thank you, Jim. Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 That resolution is approved. Guy, did you have a?
Yeah, if I could, Your Honor. Um, just a comment on the proclamation for Public Works Week. It is really appreciated by the staff. They they appreciate that you take the time. This is, I think, the fifth or the sixth year that you've made that proclamation in Fergus Falls. And they appreciate that you and the council recognize that. They are positions that are vital to the function of a city. They're not high-esteem positions. They're the guys picking the garbage, cleaning the sewers, refining the the water out at the wastewater plant. It's positions like that. They're getting you the the rat's eye view of the sewers with our portable rack mount system. So it's uh, positions like that, but the staff take great pride in their positions and they do appreciate you. Thank you.
Thanks for those words, Guy. Certainly appreciate all the work that they do. One more item. Anthony, you had a uh, a question regarding the uh, emergency powers from the, was it the state or the city and we're operating under?
Yep. It was just that as things are now starting to lift and and ease, we still have that order in place. And I know we discussed about doing it in conjunction with the state, but it seems like the state is in a state. And and obviously, they're using it as a political tool and uh, and I I kind of think that we don't need to have emergency powers anymore. We can meet on a regular basis. And I think we've proven even under, in a pandemic, we can still meet, you know, meet other criteria. So I think it's something we should revisit and and resent the order so we're not operating under emergency rules.
Thanks, Anthony. Is is there any, is there any, there's nothing we're doing or have done for quite a long time relating to the emergency powers, correct?
Right, exactly. Thank you, Your Honor, Councilman Hix. I I think that's totally appropriate. We have not utilized emergency powers since probably the first month of the pandemic over a year ago. The thought was we'll run them concurrently. I don't think any of us expected it would be this long. And and then it was, you know, have the ability to seek reimbursement through FEMA or other means if necessary. The funding has come in other ways, through the CARES Act and through the American Rescue Dollars. So I think it would be just fine, very appropriate, especially the night we all get to sit next to one another and see each other's faces again, that we symbolically end the emergency. Though we have not operated under those guidelines or or in an emergency or done anything um, beyond what our ordinance has prescribed for a long time.
And we could do that. And and um, Chief of Public Safety is not going to object to that, I I assume. I can imagine.
I haven't, we haven't had the discussion, but I think we're all of the same mindset that let's get back to to normal, let's live our lives.
Certainly.
We're we're excited to see the loosening of of all of the things that have been loosened.
And that's done by resolution, I assume, correct? Yep. So if someone would like to offer.
I would make a resolution, but I think.
I'll second.
Second, Justin.
Time to strip you of those powers.
Boy, all right. Any other, that was your comment?
Your Honor, let me to that end, so people don't run with that. They were very useful. We were able to be very flexible with businesses on the front end of the pandemic. And um, we were able to work with downtown businesses to provide dedicated spots for carryout and to provide opportunities for advertising and signage when really things were tough. And when businesses were struggling. And so I applaud all of you for um, seeing the importance of that. I applaud your guys' support in allowing staff be flexible and to meet the businesses and other community members where they were and to provide the needs that they had at the time. And um, I can confidently say those powers weren't abused by anyone, including the mayor. And uh, and they were put to good use where where necessary, but it's been a long time. So thank you, guys.
Yeah, in in all seriousness, the, you know, the fact that the staff wanted to keep them, they used them when they they needed to, there was no political um, posturing. Anyway, that's that's approved. I mean, that's appreciated. I'm sorry. So anyway, there's a resolution to end those emergency powers. There's a second. Any further comments besides Tom? Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 That resolution is approved. And with nothing else.
Maybe one one other announcement, Your Honor.
You have a message?
And as a perfect segue, um, as you'll see on the bottom of your agenda under announcements, as of June 1st, we're no longer going to be doing the Zoom thing. Um, the state is putting some rules in place that uh, because of the pandemic, you were able to have that flexibility. And going forward, um, council members can only attend, I think it's three meetings a year, um, but they must be for medical reasons. And after that, if they were going to participate via Zoom, they would have to be in a public place that was accessible to the public. And quite frankly, it's probably easier for staff and council and the public to not even have the rigmarole of all of those uh, regulations. So um, we encourage folks to attend our meetings in person if they're comfortable. Um, they always can reach their council members and they will still be streamed via peg access and the city's YouTube channel. So there's ample opportunity to view and participate. And I just wanted to give folks a heads up that um, starting June 1st, so the next council meeting, we'll have that as an option. That would be the same for the boards and commissions of the city and for the port authority as well. So just another step back towards normal.
Yeah, thanks. Andrew, and thanks, Anthony, for bringing that up. That's a good, good timing and uh, yeah, like you say, it's good to be back, get to back to normal. So uh, with that, we adjourn.